Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for, um...
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Diroff.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Ms. Hogan. Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Penarello.
Here.
Now we will rise, and a moment of silence for the victims of the Nashville shooting.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, humiliated, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of School Directors met in an executive session on the following dates: Tuesday, March 14th. Topic was collective bargaining. The meeting lasted ninety minutes. And Wednesday, March 22nd. Topic was personnel. The meeting lasted ten minutes.
Next, we have student spotlights. We'll start with Mrs. Moyer and some special guests.
Lots of special guests. I love a cool room. Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin tonight's student spotlights with two updates for all of you. First, I would like to congratulate our "What's So Cool About Manufacturing?" team from Middle School West. Their video featuring RM Palmer Candy Company earned them an award for Outstanding Outreach Plan in this year's competition. Their video has also been chosen for submission to this year's state competition. So they are one of the four videos moving on from Burke Schukel to represent us in the state competition. As you all know, RM Palmer's West Reading location was the scene of a tragic explosion that claimed the lives of seven people. We have been asked multiple times if this is the same location that our team visited. The answer is no. However, yesterday, we were notified that their primary contact from RM Palmer was among the victims. For more information about the project and how you can help the RM Palmer families, please see today's edition of Let's Talk Tuesdays. There's lots of information in there, including some information on their accomplishments thus far. At our last meeting, members of BASH's Future Business Leaders of America Club shared their plans for a Veterans Memorial at BASH. During the presentation, one of you asked if they hadn't had any interactions with local businesses, and they kind of hesitated, and maybe one or two. So we are pleased to report that they will present their project plans to the Berksmont Business Association next Wednesday at their monthly breakfast meeting. As a result of those discussions, the Business Association has also asked for a presentation regarding our internship program at BASH. Some of our interns and the advisors from the high school were presented their May breakfast meeting with the hopes of continuing to expand the program throughout the community. Okay, so I need to make sure no one's in the aisle. I'm gonna let Ms. Hogan come over to her seat. Mr. French, that's your cue. Okay, so when I said at the start of my presentation tonight that I had two updates, that wasn't a hundred percent accurate. The third of our spotlight updates is here to join us in person, along with her family. So, the princess warrior leading the parade into the room is Brianna Spees, our kindergartner battling pediatric cancer from Washington Elementary School. She's followed by her sister Jordan, her mom Jessica, and her dad Chris. So, um... I know we've all anxiously waited a time when we could meet Brianna and her family in person. Obviously, tonight's the night. Neither Brianna or her mom Jessica like the spotlight or speaking in front of people, so I will share Jessica's update on her behalf. And then Brianna, we've made a pact. Brianna has been doing great overall. We head to New York, April 4 to 7, for vaccine number five as part of the trial and a full workup of scans and procedures. We can only hope to hear those words, "No evidence of disease," again. We will get to bring Jordan along with us for two days this trip so she can see the big city where sissy goes. Grandma's are coming too. And as many might know, Brianna and our family have been chosen as the beneficiary of the Angels for Alley Beef and Beer for this year. They want to thank all of you that may have had a part in that. She will let us know how New York goes when they receive the results. I'm so excited you're here. You gonna come help me? Do you want to stand on a chair, or do you want me to hold you? You tell me. Want me to pick you up? Come here. So, I had the pleasure of meeting this very special young lady earlier this evening, and we have become fast friends, right? Yeah, you excited to be here? It's kinda crazy that all these people are here to see you, isn't it? What color are they wearing? What color are most of them wearing out there? Are they wearing pink? Whose favorite color is pink? No way! Do you think maybe they're wearing pink for you? I think that's pretty cool, isn't it? So, uh, you're a pretty, you're a pretty cool kid. How's kindergarten? What's your favorite part?
I like to do, um... I like to do computers.
You like to do computers? What do you like to do on the computer?
I like to read some books.
You like to read books? And is it true that Rainbow Fish is one of your favorite books? Is it also true that you like bugs and dirt?
Yeah.
And you like to ride scooter? Which, oh, by the way, happens to be pink. Hmm, what else? What's your favorite treat? Do you like Oreo cookies?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah! So, do you think maybe we could do a little trip around the room and get high fives from all those people together? And I think maybe we need to stop by, and we need to see Mrs. Torsha on her way by. What do you think? Will you go with me? All right, I'm putting you down. We're gonna go get high fives from the group. Mom, is that okay with her going next week? Okay. All right, come on. Fifth one. Anything is fine, you know. All the way around, girlfriend. These people have been waiting to meet you for months. We're gonna skip Mrs. Torsha and come back. Here, sweetie, come here. So is it okay if they, yes, if they have any questions? Can you ask questions? If I stay here with you? Does anybody have any questions for Brianna while we're here? You know what? All of these people, since I introduced you earlier this year, every time I see them, I just come out here. That's pretty cool, isn't it? Who knew they made so many Oreo products? Guys, we are so happy you are here, and thank you for letting us follow your journey. You are in our hearts and prayers all the time. I'm anxious to hear about your trip to New York. All right, so I have one more friend I need to introduce, so you can choose if you want to stay in here or if you want to wait for me outside. What would you like to do? You want to wait here while Ms. Cara does her presentation? That's pretty cool. She's another student warrior princess. That's what I have to say. So, finally, this evening, Cara Friend is back with us to celebrate another accomplishment in her inspiring journey as a BASH junior. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, LLS, holds an annual fundraiser for blood cancer called Student Visionaries of the Year. This fundraiser runs from January 6th to February 25th. This year, Cara had the opportunity to be BASH's team leader, managing a group of highly dedicated and hardworking people that made up Team Made, Make a Difference Every Day. Cara is here tonight to share her story.
All right, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me again. She already pretty much got what I was gonna say in the beginning about what LLS is. But I do want to say it is also a fun competition between student-led teams, so I got to meet tons of other kids who have the same aspirations as me, and it was absolutely fantastic. And before I start off, I wanted to thank Ms. Diroff for your gift and your donation. It made me cry. I was, it was so sweet and so thoughtful. And thank Ms. Moyer for all her support and for her donation with her organization. And thanking you guys for wanting to listen to me about something I care about so much. Okay, so to get started, I first got involved with LLS through the two lovely ladies sort of in the middle. It's the one in the green dress. Her name is Paige Agabachi. She goes to Perkyomen Prep. And then Gabby Martin, who is directly in the middle. And she attends BASH with me, and she's one of my very close friends. I mean, both of them are. They're great, great people. So, I was a team member that year. It was the 2021 to 2022 campaign under the name Team Purple. It was their favorite color, and it's something they bonded over. And I got support from Argento's Pizza, which is right in Boyertown. We got little coupons, and I went around my neighborhood selling those. And as a team, we raised a little over 25K, which was awesome. And without them, I would not have the skills I would to start another team. And as a whole, we've raised, in that picture on the right, we've raised $344,697 with all of the teams collectively. And then overall, this was just a great experience working with them. And then, when I decided to start my own team, I decided to name Team Made, which my dad actually made, so stands for Make a Difference Every Day. And then, though the campaign starts in January, the preparation started way before then. So, the first thing was reaching out to friends and even some adults to join my team and to share the mission of LLS and what it does. So, I reached out to as many people I could think of. If you knew me, you gotta text. So, overall, I landed on a wonderful team, including ten students from BASH, Lexi Bassino, who is here tonight. She continually kept up with her business emails and got a gift card for our silent auction basket. And then we have Mary Ann Leschenzki, Isabella Ingracia, Grace Marine, Anna Eschott, Bailey Duncan, Josh Reed, who is also here tonight in the corner, Natalie Fry, Ava Ainge, Sam Hoffman. And then we had Katie Lewis, who is an adult. She was the only adult on our team, and her hard work matched. She was amazing, absolutely amazing. And then, we also received some business support, which I'm absolutely grateful for. That really kicked off our campaign. We received support from Jefferson Health with a $2,500 sponsorship. So that really put us in the books, getting their approval to support my team. And then we got a P. Pfizer matching donation, so they matched whatever an employee matched. And then we got the Boyertown District-wide Dress Down Day, which was super awesome, getting to see the community all come together for the same cause. And then we got Rochester Law, which we got a $50 donation from them. And then the Junior Women's Club of Boyertown. And then, we also had silent auction support. So this was for businesses that wanted to contribute but couldn't do a cash donation.
Yeah, you're good, silly.
Yeah. So, yeah, those were for the businesses who wanted to donate, like, items. In a silent auction we held on our grand finale night, which most of those pictures are from. So, one of our big silent auction items was from the NFL. We got a Devante Smith football, and it was signed by him, which was super awesome. And we got an Eagles blanket and ornaments, which is the basket on the far right on the bottom. So that was the signed football and then other Eagles items. And then, we also got a painting. We had an alcohol basket with different souvenirs from the companies. And then, we got gift card basket, which with Kiwi yogurt, Redners, Bath &amp; Body Works, Capone's, which Lexi got, Weiss's, Chibi Cafe, and Broad Theater. So, it was crazy to see how many businesses wanted to support in the way they could. And just getting to talk to different communities and different businesses was super awesome, just to spread the word. And then, the big thing that I enjoyed the most was our events that we had. So, I, first thing I did when I did this is I set up an interview with Reading Eagle Newspaper. And it was awesome. She was so on board with it, and I got to talk to her about what I'm doing, what I want to do, and what my goals are. So that was like our first thing that we did. And then we had a Texas Roadhouse dine and donate, which a lot of my friends and family members came to. And 10% of the meals went to the campaign, and we also had a little raffle basket. But it was awesome because I got to meet people that knew people who had cancer or had some affiliation with that. So I could see how my impact was directly helping others. It's just absolutely amazing to be hands-on and helping people. And then we had a Dairy Queen fundraiser, which was a week-long event, and 20% of the sales went to the campaign. And then we had a Super Bowl pool, which all credit goes to my mom for that. She did everything. I have no idea about football. It's really bad. But she, she did absolutely amazing with that. And we got over $1,300 for that. And then we also had support from the school store, which was really nice. We had like a little donation box out there so students could contribute in ways that they could. And then, again, without the family and friends, it would have not been possible, like, at all. They brought up the money. They supported me continuously, whether it was through, like, donations or just helping out with kind words. It was absolutely awesome. And then, the grand finale. So that was the big night that everybody got together. It was some, first time I was meeting some of the people as well from other teams. And we all get together. We have a dinner. We celebrate our hard work. And one thing that I am eternally grateful for is our team won the Mission Pillar Award for Patient Education and Support. So, directly, hands-on, helping patients in any way possible has always been like my big aspiration with this. So I thought it would be the best Mission Pillar to apply for. Can't really see the award, but that's me holding it on the top. Right, but yeah, it was absolutely amazing. And I'm really grateful for LLS for nominating me for that. And then, I want to point out the beautiful big picture in the middle. The girl I am with is Gia. She was our honored hero, who had LLS. And she is continuously, like, fighting. And she, I tell you, she's the sweetest girl. She has so much ambition. And she was a really big factor in keeping the teams going. And just getting to meet her that night was absolutely awesome. And I know she has a big trip planned for fun, so she gets to go out and, you know, just live her life and be a little girl. It's absolutely awesome to see how she's resilient through the whole situation her and her family went through. But I did want to point her out because she was a really big factor during this campaign. Then, for the big total, our team raised a little over 27K together. And that's with the team members and myself. Without my team members, again, I would not have been where I am. With their support, especially a lot of them were my friends or some of them who I haven't really been close with, but I got close with with the campaign. Again, just getting to meet new people and work together. And then, the picture on the left in the top is the total we've raised as a whole with all the other teams. So it's $271,598. I remember standing there, and one of the girls next to me said, "We could buy a house with this money." And she was so ecstatic. But if you think about it in retrospect, how many people we are actually helping with the money is insane that you can buy a house with it. And then, the last picture I want to point you to is the one on the left on the bottom. That's some of my team members who were able to make it that night. They were able to either raise enough or win an initiative to get a ticket to the grand finale. So it was awesome having that many of them there and their dedication and hard work to be a part of this. And then the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so obviously, I want to continue with LLS. I absolutely love it. In any way possible, I want to continue with it. And I'm very fortunate to announce I have four team members who are going to continue and be team leaders next year. So they're gonna take a role that I did this year. So, Isabella Ingracia, Mary Ann Leschenzki, and Lexi Bassino are going to be under the name Team Care, which stands for Cancer Awareness Reaching Everyone, which is super awesome. Yeah, it's great. And again, all three of them are really good friends of mine, so I want to either mentor them or be a team member in their team. Some way I can support them. LLS has a mentor program. But I texted them. I said, "Whatever they need help with, I'll be there for it because it's about them next year and what they have going on." And then Josh Reed is also going to be a team leader next year. So I want to thank him for that as well, just continuing to keep the Boyertown community involved. And then, overall, I just want to thank you guys for having me again. This was a great experience that I'll absolutely never forget, like, the hard work, and it kept me, kept me going. It's something to look forward to constantly. I always had something going on, but I would have never changed any of it. It was absolutely amazing. So, yeah, that was everything, but I appreciate you all for listening to me. Thank you.
All right, guys. I think we have one more celebration. So I'm gonna ask you to hold tight for me for one second because I'm gonna, if it's okay with you, I might be jumping out of order, but I was gonna let you do the last group for us. All right, awesome.
My pleasure. I get the, have the pleasure of recognizing our Girls' Winter Track Team, who have joined us tonight. We have, where is Harper Glennon? Harper, Jocelyn Wissinger, and Katie McAluso. Did I say that right? Sam Devlin. Wonderful. So congratulations to our Girls' 4x200 Relay Team on their 10th place finish at the Pennsylvania Track and Field Indoor State Championship Meet. The team missed the school record by... Do you guys have it memorized? .35 seconds. Members of the relay team, as I introduced, are Harper, Jocelyn, Katie, and Sam. And then, outside of that group, congratulations to Harper, who finished 10th in the 60-meter dash at the Pennsylvania Track and Field Indoor State Championship. In the qualifying heat, Harper tied a personal record with a time of 7 minutes 91 seconds. She moved to the finals... I'm sorry, that wasn't right. It's not 7 minutes, 7 seconds, 7.91. She moved to the finals, and that would be a very great record. She moved to the finals and tied the school record with a time of 7.86. So congratulations to our Girls' Winter Track Team. If you would come up here, I have just a small token, a little gift for each of you to congratulate you. But yeah, sorry about that, 7 minutes. 7 seconds. That's pretty darn fast. Yeah, 7 minutes. I'm used to things running in minutes. Seconds is a little bit. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you for coming out.
So, congratulations to everybody. I'm going to tell you that at this point, if you guys want to disappear, you are welcome to do so. You're welcome. Thanks for tonight. Thanks for your time.
Sorry. They also qualified for Nationals. And they both, they ran at Nationals. We had a 4x4 team qualify for Nationals, and Harper ran in the 60 at Nationals. The biggest thing about those guys is there's only one senior, one junior, two sophomores. So, we got a good future right now. Thanks.
Student representative report.
All right. So, good evening, parents, staff, and board members. We have some very exciting news to share with you this evening. This month, we were given the opportunity to take a trip to the middle schools to host a student luncheon. We gathered some very valuable information from them that we will present after we announce some school events and news.
Boyertown Schools participated in Read Across America on March 2nd. This event gives students the freedom to read and learn through books. National Honor Society members gathered to read to the younger students in our community. It was a day of fun, of learning.
As juniors, we must start thinking about our future after high school, including what we want to do for a living and where we want to go. This month, juniors had an opportunity to travel to Alvernia University to visit a plethora of college stands to gain insight of a possible university they would like to attend. Also, on the 24th, 25th, and 26th of this month, Middle School West put on their performance of Annie Junior. The students worked extremely hard during practices and preparation for set design and costumes came together very well. Good job to all of those involved.
So like Lexia said, this month, we were able to host a luncheon at Middle School East and West. We go to these schools, and we eat lunch with the students and then ask them a couple of questions. This being our first luncheon with them, our questions were very generic about what's happening within the schools. We touched on the students' opinions on half-days, which was something that we touched at the high school lunches as well. We decided to ask them what they thought. Everyone said it was nice to have a break from school, and they feel that they had the same amount of work done and just slightly shortened. Students that played sports said it was nice to have some more time before practice. Overall, half-days were appreciated by the students.
Okay. So students at both East and West seem to agree on an idea similar to BASH's open campuses to be implemented at the middle school. Oftentimes, students find themselves caught up on their work or want just free time to talk to their friends or do activities that aren't necessarily schoolwork or schoolwork-related. The students also requested more grade-level activities, Freedom of Spirit Days, and assemblies. Students would love to have more grade-level activities to get to know one another. And as for Spirit Days, students find that it channels their inner creativity, and they would love to expand on that. Another topic that arose was the lunch menu. In the students' opinion... In the students' opinion, they feel that the portions are sort of small, depending on the person, and that those who get free reduced lunch find themselves sometimes having to buy like an extra meal just to feel full. And this may not be the case for all students, but it was a concern brought up by a couple of students. And they also suggested maybe to see a little bit more healthy options implemented into the menu, if that's possible.
There have also been concerns in the middle school about the environment within the building. We're gonna do more research and observations to confirm or deny the concerns in our next report. Some students have also felt that there is inequality with some teachers, things like picking favorites and favoring certain genders.
We did have a lot of students, uh, comment on their favorite classes and teachers. Our was a big hit in both of the schools.
So another topic was su- support from the school. And we had some students say that, I know they have a Reach for Success class, and they felt like sometimes it would kind of turn to study halls. Um, they overall like the information that's being taught and they would like it to like go on more and more in depth, but they feel like sometimes it's just another study hall, um. Overall, they enjoy the class and students would like to see more useful skills implemented into learning, including stress management. Um, one student suggested that a time for peer counseling would be beneficial for students suffering from like loss, stress, and other aspects of life. Having students who can understand each other's experiences and feelings could be beneficial to both sides to work through their feelings. Since and I have heard that the middle schools do some sort of program like this and maybe not all students know about it, so I just thought if we could push that a little bit more, that would be great. Um, as for the support from teachers, students wish that some teachers would be more lenient with their work for students who have a reason for not completing it. However, students had great things to say about a majority of their teachers.
Lexi and I were surprised at the different responses between East and West. When we brought up going to high school, East was mainly excited to move on from middle school and had a lot of question about the high school classes. West kids, on the other hand, were very comfortable at the middle school.
So thank you so much for listening to everything we had to share tonight, and we hope to be able to provide even more information with the couple of meetings we have left. Have a great night.
It's public comment period number one, for which we have no one signed up.
Discussion information with respects to the twenty-three, twenty-four school directors. Oh, sorry.
Looking for approval meeting minutes for March fourteenth, Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I want to move.
I'll second.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we'll talk about the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school directors, uh, meeting calendar. In working with the board leadership, the calendar presented, um, for tonight and it will be voted on later, it does, um, include two meetings a month. The first meeting is held the second Tuesday of each month and those meeting dates are going to be reserved for, um, tentative committee, committee meetings. That could be budgets, special needs meetings, policy, et cetera. Those, um, meetings will be confirmed and worked through, um, both the administration and the board representative for the, the meeting. Um, those will be held in August, September, October, November. Um, in December, we have, um, a different meeting at the beginning of December. It's our board reorganization meeting. That's always held the first week of December. And then we would continue forward with the committee meetings through January, February, March, April. May would be held specifically for Committee of the Whole Meeting for budgetary reasons. And then June, um, would then also include a meeting for committees. The voting meetings would continue to stand on the fourth meeting of each month. Um, sometimes it changes because of holidays, uh, that may interfere with that fourth Tuesday. Sorry, did I say Monday, the fourth Tuesday, or third Tuesday, um, in some respect. So as you're looking through, you can identify those voting meetings as the green, um, blocks. Again, this was, um, discussed with our board leadership. Um, any questions? Mrs. Duroff.
I was just concerned, just so I understand this, we're only scheduling one meeting a month now?
We are going to have the potential for two meetings, but one meeting will be consistently a voting meeting each month, correct?
We're just scheduling one meeting.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I don't say no to one meeting a month, um, but I do have some concerns, um, with the information the board right now receives it on Friday for Tuesday because it's probably gonna be a longer meeting. Will we, we be getting the information a little bit earlier? Is that a, is that possible? Because even with the Friday to Tuesday now, it sometimes can be a little difficult to see, you know, get through everything. So is that something we could consider?
Yes, it would be something that we could easily, more easily get out if there are not going to be two voting meetings where agendas have to be set. It would be pretty streamlined with respects to what would be presented.
Okay.
Again, this is open for discussion.
Right, right. I'm just putting it out there. And then the other thing with the committee meetings, I don't have a problem with that either, is, but let me ask, is it, is that a public meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's great. So my, my suggestion to the board would be to consider scheduling these. Your only, you know, the way it's sitting is, you know, let's say a good time for the curriculum committee would be September 12th because that's when you start to have scheduling issues and things like that and, and things to work through. Not that we have to do that, we leave that to them, but that would be a good time to have a meeting. And each, you know, have the committees look at what dates really work throughout the school year that we would have these meetings open to the public. We would still have our agenda. It still runs as a voting meet, no, it's not a voting meeting, but it still runs, like this one runs, you have your agenda, you have it put before the public ahead of time and that's, that type of thing.
It would have to be advertised in advance as to what kind of meeting it is. And typically, we have always included if it's a committee meeting, that it could be, um, a curriculum committee meeting with voting. Uh, that there's always a potential for something that might need to be put on there. But, um, it would definitely be a brief agenda for the voting part and it would be primarily specific to the committee work.
Okay.
And yes, it would be all public.
Okay, but that, if we had something on a committee that needed to be voted on, that would come to the voting meeting? Right? Is that what you said? Okay, just want to clarify that. So, um, so my suggestion to the board would be to schedule this ahead of time because time gets away from you. And the next thing you know, somebody's saying, oh, my gosh, it's coming up. That way, we're preparing ahead of time. Those that are on committees, you have more time. And the parents have more time to see which meetings they can make and it's just, I think it's better to schedule. I think this is great, but I would schedule it and publish it with what meetings. And then if something has to switch for a reason, you know, like say finance has to meet and policies there. I mean, they could flip back and forth, but at least you made an attempt to schedule everything out for the year. And I don't think that would be difficult to do.
Personally, I don't think this is gonna work. I think we need to keep the two meetings a month going. Um, if it is, uh, a committee meeting and it's finance or whatever, it might be a short meeting. But I'd rather have a short meeting and have the information out there than not have a meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm just concerned it, we're not gonna have the information out there for the people.
Um, yeah, I like Mrs. Scott's idea of scheduling meetings ahead, like, uh, committee meetings ahead of time. I think that is a great idea and I agree. Um, I know that there are particular times of year, obviously, finance would meet more in the spring, um, due to budget. And education can meet in the fall to, you know, do curriculum overviews and things like that. Um, so I think that, that that makes a lot of sense. Um, I'm certainly not opposed to having one meeting a month if we can, if we don't have work that needs to get done. Um, but I do like the idea of kind of scheduling that ahead so that it's on the calendar. Um, that makes sense to me. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree. Um, for us to discuss stuff, especially if we're gonna vote on, we need the information ahead of time and have our discussions in an open meeting like this. Uh, there's too many decisions being made and voting on, on that particular day. Now, I'm not saying we're not getting the information, but we're not able to discuss it or change it. So the next thing we know, that's pushed off another month. So I didn't realize that that one day or two days a month was too much for people. So I prefer to have it like we have it right now. And the nice part of scheduling, um, our committees ahead of time. So, you know, if there is a decision or if people would like to come, that would be great.
Down to scheduling one meeting a month is the absolute bare minimalist, minimal requirements for the state. I don't, I'm not sure we want to go there. Uh, I think going to less than, less than two meetings is probably not, not conducive to get things done properly. Uh, we should at least have some sort of committee meeting during the week to have, or during the month. So we move into the voting meeting with established topics that we've discussed and we're ready to move forward on. That way, when something comes up, it goes to the committee, then goes to the voting meeting. Um, tentative, tentative committee meetings aren't really a very good way to go about doing that.
The other part too, I think we should consider, uh, especially when we're talking about budget right now. If we do this each month, schedule another meeting, we'd have to advertise. So the advertisement's gonna be a lot more money per year than it is now. Because we advertise from the beginning, the two meetings.
Also, if you want to conserve a little bit, I know in the month of November, we have the reorganization. Now, that's December. That's December. So I think that's.
December fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, December fifth. We could actually have a meeting after that. You have the reorganization meeting, you end that one and you go into another one. So it wouldn't be like a problem, I don't think.
The idea of scheduling the, um, the cr- the meetings for the different committees. I mean, we've done a pretty good job, we feel, trying to get more transparency out there, especially in finance. Patty's done a good job with that. I think from what I've been involved with, with Tony and I, it can become, I could easily see that meeting going three, four hours because if everybody breaks down a, you know, a number column. So I don't necessarily want to have a public or finance meeting, but, you know, we'd have our meetings and then Patty could give a report of what was happening in the meeting and.
I think maybe the simplest thing, if everyone wants to have two meetings definitively, was to turn the blue ones and the yellow ones. Um, but, uh, and I could be wrong. I believe the bare minimum is one meeting every two months.
I think it would, um, be reasonable to not schedule a meeting in July. Um, and then if one needs to be called, we could call it. I know, um, you know, I sit on the BCIU, we don't, we don't hold meetings in July. Um, and then I think it, depending on what's happening in December, um, I liked Chris's idea of using the board reorg, which takes twenty minutes maybe. I don't even know if it's that long. And then rolling right into a meeting, because it's a busy month, you know, for everyone, families and everybody. Um, but I do like the other, the other bonus to having two meetings a month is that, um, now that we've expanded our public comment policy, it really does allow the public to come out and, um, to provide us more feedback, um, which I think is important. But, yeah, I think we could definitely eliminate a few.
The only reason why the July meeting is there is because that is a time where we're doing a lot of hiring. So we do need to have a personnel meeting. But again, we did a special meeting this past year, um, with respects to just personnel. It was brief. I believe we did it virtually. We advertised it. Um, we just need to hold that publicly. And if I'm understanding what both you and Ms. Nyman are, are suggesting is that in December, remove the second meeting and just keep a voting meeting right after the reorg meeting. Is that your suggestion? I, I know we kept the reorg very, very short, but then we held the meeting in the middle of the month. But it is two times that you would be coming out. So, um, I don't, you know, really have a problem with that. I, I, I don't, this is your, your calendar, so I am not, um, advocating one way or another. I'm just trying to take accurate notes so that I can get them for Mr. Panarello and, and Mr. Updegrove, but that, that's fine.
Also, I think maybe in June, if the budget's passed already, we could go down to one meeting with that being our summer and one meeting in July, unless something would really be hot. And that way, you know, people would have their summer months to do a little something else.
So from my understanding, Ms. Torsia, basically to look back at the meeting that we had at Earl Township for, that was a big open curriculum meeting, that's what we're gonna try to do, schedule besides and then have just a strict discussion on that particular committing. Okay.
Correct. Just like with policy, when there is, you know, multiple policies that need to be updated to be brought up to current, um, code, school code wordage, those types of, uh, meetings as well, yes.
So June thirtieth, June thirtieth is when the budgets, final budgets pushed in, is that correct?
Has to be no later than June thirtieth. It can be earlier.
So we would drop down to one meeting in, in the month where we may have to be working, still working through on a budget? And I'm not sure I'm real happy with that. Uh, as far as having another, having a meeting during the reorganization meeting, you could have four new people on there. What are you gonna get accomplished? I don't, I don't think that's a very good idea either.
Um, with Mr. Murphy's point, which is valid, um, I would assume though, we could probably have the meeting and do the reorg at the end of the meeting. Could, is that, you can't do that? You have to do the reorg first?
Yes.
Okay.
No, a- again, we, we take too much time on even decide what we're gonna have on a calendar. It's ridiculous. Let's move on.
So just for direction, we do have the calendar on for vote. Do you want to move forward with that? Do you want to, we'll table it?
Yep.
Okay.
Treasury report.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Fox. I am the accounting manager for the Boyertown Area School District. Uh, my presentation tonight is going to be brief as I do become acclimated to my new role. Uh, you can expect more detailed presentations from me in the near future. Um, in the meantime, I'd like to share a few highlights from the February twenty-twenty-three treasurer's report. Um, a couple revenue items, including local revenue, earned income tax collection was five hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars and eleven cents. State revenue, the total amount received from PDE Basic Education subsidy was two million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars. And the expenditures in the area that includes year-to-date totals for salaries, benefits, and professional services accounted for sixty-five percent of the total expenditures. And that concludes my treasurer's report. Thank you for your time.
So we need a motion from the, for the Board of School Directors to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Euro moves.
Hogan second.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have to have a motion to bring forward the three cabinet contracts that were tabled at the March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three Committee of the Whole Meeting for a vote.
Hogan motions.
Brophy seconds.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Upon nomination of the superintendent, motion to appoint Michael R. Stout as District Assistant Superintendent for the time period of July 1, 2023 until June 30, 2026, and to approve his employment agreement pursuant to sections 5508, 10-1076, and 10-1077 of the Public School Code of 1949 as amended.
Hogan motions. Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
I'm going to abstain. And you need my reason. I'm abstaining because I was not part of the executive session and I still have questions that are unanswered. So I am abstaining.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
I don't think that's an adequate reason to to abstain, but whatever, Christine.
I was not part of the executive session. So yeah, I'm abstaining.
Next, I would be bringing forward the motion to approve the employment agreement between the Board of School Directors of the Boyertown Area School District and Patricia Denacola as Chief Financial Officer over the time period of July 1, 2023 until June 30, 2026.
Hogan, second. Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Abstaining for the same reason.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, motion to approve the employment agreement between the Board of School Directors of the Boyertown Area School District and Dr. Virginia Frederickson as Chief Human Resources Officer over the time period of July 1, 2023 until June 30, 2026.
Your move.
Hogan, seconds.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Abstaining.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Mr. Sultanik, you'll have to help me with this one. A motion to table the 2023-2024 Board of School Directors Meeting Calendar.
Hogan motions.
Yeah, or you could just withdraw it. We can just, we can just simply withdraw that from action. We don't need to table it.
Then we will withdraw the 2023-2024 Board of School Directors Meeting Calendar for another date. Next, approve, sorry. Next, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of Mrs. Carrie Fox to the position of Board Treasurer for the 2023-2022-2023 fiscal year and annual stipend of $1,200 as prorated.
Your move.
Hogan, second.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to appoint Mrs. Carrie Fox as the district's alternate representative to the Berks Earned Income Tax EIT Bureau Executive Committee.
Zawada moves.
Hogan, seconds. Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Hogan moves.
Brophy, second.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public comment period number two. First is Krista Collins.
Good evening, Krista Collins, and I am speaking on policy 105.1, the curriculum review policy. I was asked to join a parent and sit in on a curriculum review in January, so I wanted to offer some feedback based on my experience. First, the teachers and the staff were very friendly and helpful during the entire review meeting. So that was great. And second, there were several examples of topics that you'd expect for a seventh grade English class, poems, creative writing assignments, things like that. But there were some scholastic articles discussing the benefits of ditching traditional paper money and switching to digital currency. There was also a lesson that focused on the benefits of eating bugs as a way to save the planet from climate change. That was a stack of papers, probably a minimum of a half inch thick. I bring this up because they are examples of specific social political ideology that have no place in a classroom. Thus, the need to reinforce transparency in the curriculum and ensure that our policies actively encourage parents to encourage in their child's learning. The two main issues that I saw with this policy after reading it, reviewing it myself, and then sitting through the actual process were that parents can only review one subject per semester. So if you have a student that is in middle school or high school and you want to review English, you want to review math, and you want to review science, you cannot do that. You can only review one. That really does not promote transparency. You kind of have to pick and choose. Number two, parents aren't able to make any copies or take any pictures, even of like, say, this scholastic article that I was talking about. And those scholastic articles are only able to be viewed if you sign up for a, if you sign up for scholastic, which costs about $100. Obviously, it is taxpayer funded because we pay for everything. So if we're sitting in on a curriculum review policy, we want to take a picture or get a photocopy or something like that, I don't see what the problem is. We couldn't even take pictures of the actual list of books, couldn't take pictures of the poems, things like that. That, to me, is really not transparent. Parental involvement is one of the top indicators for success, and that is one of the biggest reasons why it's important to encourage this involvement wherever possible. So for this reason, I'm asking the Board to open this policy for discussion and make the modifications needed to improve this policy. Thank you very much.
Next, Cassandra Rooney.
All right. So thank you for your report from the middle school. It's very accurate, by the way. The food is terrible. Just an improvement idea, give substitute teachers a login so that the students don't miss the morning announcements. Also, nice updates on the parent portal. You get a filter and sort option. However, I'm curious about the update that includes the students' pronouns on their demographic details. How does the district intend to fill in the child's data? Are you talking about sexuality in class? I think we have laws and policies against that. Are you giving them a survey? What conversation comes about once the child reveals their pronoun? It seems quite intrusive to ask or include this on a child's profile. I want to also say how great it is that we have a policy in place for sudden cardiac arrest. I think we are only talking about the need, but I wonder if we can talk about the cause. I agree that there is a need for the responsiveness, but I ask everyone to look at why we need them. Are there still COVID and vaccine posters in the schools? Board behavior. It has been a topic for quite some time. Some ideas for better outcome. Each board member speaks for themselves. Don't try to be a spokesperson for several members. Be more respectful of others speaking. No tantrums like tonight. To anyone considering running for the board, please do come with a positive outlook and productive ideas that will help to keep the students safe, our children learning, and a mindset to hear and value all sides of the coin. Also, in recent meetings, I hear what other districts are doing as we compare to thrive in our district. Use that effort to improve the screening process on books that come into our schools. Three years ago, you all refused to look at any other district to compare what we were doing to them. So it's wonderful that you're doing it now. I appreciate it. We need more transparent policies, like Krista stated. I do appreciate all the effort that's going into policies recently. And lastly, anyone who would file a write-to-no request to obtain an assignment that I offered to everyone for free should consider not costing the district that money for nothing.
Hi, I'm Jessica Skelton. I'm with New Hanover Township. And as a concerned taxpayer over the tax increases, I've started paying attention to the budget of the district. We pay a substantial amount of money to charter schools. I am, in full disclosure, I'm a former charter school mom for two and a half years. We came back to the district to bring our tax dollars back here. I did pose a question today when I signed up to speak or to ask a question that what are we doing to reach out to the charter school families to inquire about why they're actually charter schooling and what we can do to get them to come back to Boyertown Area School District, even if it's just coming to our cyber program? And thankfully, Mr. Stout did respond very quickly and gave me some very good information and told me about the Come to Home BASD Initiative and gave me the website for the Virtual Academy, which I did have. I've been inquiring about that for a while. And but I want to know with the outreach that we're doing and those personal phone calls and that sort of thing, do we have anybody tasked with a responsibility of analyzing the data that we are gathering from these families, putting it together in a report and presenting it along with some ideas to get those families back into our district? And are we presenting that to our administration and/or our board? And if we're doing that, is that available to the public? Because I know I would be interested in seeing that. And then the other thing that I did want to point out is that I'm not sure that the BASD Virtual Academy at Boyertownasd.org email address is working, because I've sent an email twice inquiring about the curriculum that's being offered through that program, because I do homeschool now. But I don't know if I want to continue homeschooling, and I am interested in that program, but I haven't been successful in getting a response. So I think that maybe we should check out that email address because I don't think that's normal. So, thank you.
It's kind of a tough last week for us, and we want our kids to learn. But this was a heck of a way for the kids to learn what the world's about. You know, it's very sad what happened up at Reading, losing the people at Palmer Candy. Our school just happened to be that close to it as is. I don't even know how those kids that did that project are holding together. You know, if anybody needs probably counseling, it would be those gentlemen. What happened in Nashville is should never happen anywhere. It's pure, it's a devil, it's just pure evil. And I hope that our children don't have to fear that. But the way things have been going, it's there. And with this 24-hour news cycle, it just keeps getting drilled and drilled and drilled. So let me go back to a little more positive. Thank you for bringing Brianna. It was amazing. We've been talking about her for two years now. I pray for her every night, and I think she's a, she could each teach all of us how to be stronger. Cara, the great job she's doing with bringing the awareness of leukemia, and naturally, the girls' track team, and the student representatives, thank you. And everybody, have a good night. Thank you.
Yes, I also would like to offer prayers for the family of Palmer's Chocolate Factory. There's a lot of people that I'm sure, I know several that worked there and that had worked there, and this is just a travesty. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Tina Schrody Fries on being named the 2023 Mentor of the Year. I've heard nothing but good things about her. And I heard how much her students like her, having her as a teacher. It's great to see that. It's great to see that she has been recognized for her hard work and effort that went out to, that goes out to her students. Is it, it is indeed my pleasure to say thank you and congratulations. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Hemingway, do you have any comments?
Oh, yeah, I was wondering if I'd be next in line. No, I don't. Just thank you for allowing me to zoom in. I wish I could have been there in person, but really feeling under the weather and I didn't want to, you know, jeopardize anybody's health. So everybody have a great night and thank you.
So, yeah, I don't want to belabor all the sadness that we're feeling here tonight, but just to say that it's always hard when it hits close to home and we just need to just appreciate each other more because we're here tonight and some people aren't. So my prayers are going out for the family and the kids involved. That's always a difficult thing. I also appreciate Cara being here tonight. I wish I could have said something to her. She probably doesn't realize all the people that she is touching through this program and all the lives that she is changing and people that are benefiting from all she's doing. And with Brianna coming, so small, but her courage and her journey through this is amazing as well. And my prayers to her and her family go out. Some positive things that happened in the district, the basket raffle for Earl, was that my first humongous basket raffle? That was just a training session for me, but it was fun. And I have to really, the people in charge, the teachers, the parents, the kids, the teens, what an event they put on. I mean, they were, it just went off without a hitch. I mean, you had 200-plus baskets to raffle off, and it was just amazing how it just kept moving and moving and moving. And it was a lot of fun. Our table didn't win anything, so I don't think I'm going to be invited back to that table next year. And I already told them it's okay. My feelings will not be hurt. But and then the wellness fair was the same day, and they actually had one of our students win the culinary contest. I should have asked her to make some of those pizza rolls for us. But the neat thing about that was her name is Madison Boardman, and her pizza rolls are premiering at The Grind this month in Boyertown. What a neat community, you know, that we have. And so if you want to taste our pizza rolls, that's where you can go for those. And the curriculum committee or education committee met last week, I think it was, and we were talking about the presentation that they're putting together for the Future Ready Index, which will show the test scoring per grades and things. Now, parents, you can go online to that and look at that ahead of time, and they will go over it at the presentation on how to navigate through that website, because that's not always as simple. Yeah, so that's it. Thank you.
There were two pretty horrific things. There were two pretty horrific things that happened this week, and we know what they are, I want to pivot away from them for a second. Want to talk more about the last two meetings, you've seen the value of a Boyertown education and the community and cultural values of the, of this area. Last meeting, you had the gentleman from the, for the memorial come in here and do a presentation on it, very well done, very well, very well received. We had a state senator in here, Tracy Penichuk, to look at that, I think she's going to get back to them with anything that she can help them with going forward, that's, that's what the education here does, that's what the culture here does. We had Cara here tonight, really big thing she's doing, once again, that's Boyertown culture, that's Boyertown education, that's, that's what we try to provide here, and I think we've done a fairly decent job of it going forward, I hope to continue doing that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a moment, like the rest of the Board members, and just express my, my prayers for the Palmer community and for the Nashville community. And it always makes me reflect a little bit, I believe as Mrs. Scott said, on, on how lucky we are to have the time and to make sure we live it to the fullest. I want to thank Brianna, Cara, and all of the girls from the Winter Track Team for coming out, and Mrs. Moyer for putting on a fantastic spotlight, as she always does. And Olivia and Lexi, of course, always amazing, thank you, you guys did a fantastic job. I didn't get to, I didn't get over to middle school as to see any junior, but I heard rave reviews, I mean, people were like, super impressed, so that was really nice to hear, and I think that's all for me today, thank you.
Okay, thank you from me to everybody that was here tonight, we had some really great, great people out there, families, and that's what it's about, it's about our families connecting together. I would like to, with everything that's going on, hopefully, and I know it's only a board issue, we can't do it in public, but our safety issues with our schools, I think that's, we need to look at that again, so I think that's something that should be coming up very soon for this Board, to look at and see what we can do to prevent some things, maybe for us. I know before I had asked, and I'm going to ask again, when we have old business, I would like to see a question answered from a previous meeting. That would give some transparency to our parents, and it might save us from getting some right-to-know requests if we just answer them in public. So that was another thing. And I was with Mrs. Scott at that Earl PTO Basket Raffle, and I was a donator, and that's okay, it goes for the kids, for their playground, or for things for, in school, so it was a great time, and I look forward to more of those, so thank you.
Yes, I want to just say the fact that the news has been pretty sad here lately, so the only thing we have to do is look at the positive side of what's to come, and then just be vigilant of everybody around us and everything, so to make sure that those tragedies don't happen again. Safety is the utmost concern to our students and the public.
I'm going to try and keep it positive, too, want to congratulate the four track stars, that was impressive, going to states is impressive, going to nationals is even more impressive.
We've been running at seven minutes.
Yeah. Cara, she's a hell of a speaker, that girl's got, definitely a hell of a speaker, she's doing amazing things, she should be in public speaking, I'm telling you, I was highly impressed. Brianna, so glad she was here tonight, she looks great, she looks healthy, so hopefully everything maintains. Girls, thank you, always doing a great job, and I'll end it on that.
Upcoming meetings will be April 11th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting will be held at Washington Elementary School, and then April 25th, we have our Board of School Directors Meeting here at the Ed Center.